All right, we are live. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the May 11th Town of Gray Planning Board meeting. So first up is roll call. Tamara.
President.
Melinda.
President.
David.
President.
And I'm Dan Cobb and also here, so we have a full house as far as full seats anyways. Okay, next up is minutes approval. So review and approval of the April 13th minutes. Are there any comments or corrections for minutes?
None from me.
Seeing a lot of no's. Is there a motion to accept them as submitted?
I move they're accepted as submitted.
Second.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's four nothing. All right, next up, I'm sorry, next up is information exchange. It looks like, Kristin, you've got a few things to share.
Yes, so zoning ordinance updates, we have the accessory dwelling hearing before us tonight, but I wanted to keep you posted on self-storage units, which we had the hearing on last time. That went back to council and has been set aside for additional discussion. So the moratorium was extended at the, or is expected to be extended, I'm sorry, at the May 16 meeting. It's on the agenda for May 16. So if you want to tune into that, there's talk about extending that moratorium to give us some more time for a discussion, which would likely come before the council, I believe in either in workshop or presentation forum, probably June, July. At that point, I know, Dan, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, it will be after the sitting of the next council for sure. You know, some of the ideas that were, that came up in the discussion that you had, some of the ideas that were, have just been bubbled up, some of them seem to be worth exploring. So the council asked Kristin and Doug to take a look at some of the ideas and see if there were some practical applications for them. So we'll see where it goes. There's some interesting ones that came up from that, so they might make it a lot more complicated, which is, you know, there's a balance point there too, so we'll have to wait and see.
All right, well, we appreciate you not rushing it through.
We definitely have not rushed it.
After that, the reminder about the Build Main Conference, the town manager is inviting you all to take part in that, the town is a sponsor, so attendance would be covered by the town. So if you're interested in that, please give me a heads up soon so we can get the registration in order. And update on the other, the LD 2003, as you may recall, so there are three parts, there's the accessory dwelling unit part, and then there's also affordability and density. And we are working on the affordability and density sections now to bring that to discussion with the council soon as well, to work on that piece. So the ADU piece went back to first read before council at May 2nd and was unanimously approved for first read. The public hearing is before you tonight for the formal planning board public hearing. And then second read would be next Tuesday, May 16, before council. So if there, if there are no changes and it's approved by council, it would be in effect by mid-June. That piece of it. And then we'll keep working on the other two pieces and getting input on those. The MMA planning board training, if you haven't attended a planning board training before, encouraged to do so, June 7, it's in Lewiston, so it's probably the closest it's going to be for a while.
Is that an all day?
I don't think so. I remember when I did it, it was like an evening.
Usually like two or three hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So.
I'm a hard maybe on that.
Yeah, let me know. We can sign you up through the community development office. It's always good to kind of get that background base if you haven't before. And then a post-approval update, wanted to give you all a heads up on this, the Wilson subdivision that you approved, the two-lot subdivision for Mr. Fox, remember that piece? There was some concern over whether that might be two duplexes and whether we had the authority to issue that. It was not called out explicitly on the face of the plan, but it ended up, so we did notify people because we felt there might have been some miscommunication where they felt it was going to be single-family only on both lots. So we did let the abutters know, so if you hear from some of them that it might be two duplexes. At the time when I wrote this, we didn't know, but as we're looking at it now, it looks like it's going to be one single-family, one duplex, which was part of some of those discussions anyway. So just so you know, we did proactively reach out to the abutters to make sure they were aware of the potential for that there, in case they had concerns that they could come to us. We did not hear from anyone.
I just had a quick comment on that because the, the two duplexes are in keeping with my recollection of the testimony from the applicant. So I guess it's one thing that you, the attorney said you have the right to issue it, but I'm not sure, I'm not saying it is in conflict with the testimony, and it came before us twice, so I could be misremembering which applicant had said it, but I do remember specific discussions around it being like one single-family, one duplex. It definitely was not framed as being two duplexes, and part of that approval was concessions that the board gave on the access road as far as its width and representations about how much traffic would be on it and moving it closer to one side. So there were, I think, some things in there that are worth taking a look at. That was just my recollection.
Yes, and I did go through all of the testimony and the planning board discussion and spoke with the attorney about that and the codes, and we did go through all of that, and I think there were some, there were some instances where it was presented one way and someone was presented another way. So it was, it was not 100% clear, and they felt that based on the code and representation that it could be two, but we're not in that situation now anyway, so we're in the clear. But we did give a heads up to people in case we ended up in that situation, that our opinion was that it could, because the board didn't explicitly call out on the face of the plan or the NOD, no it's a decision that it had to be a certain way, that it could be two duplexes. So maybe just as, as something to think about going forward, if that's something that you want to be part, and LD 2003 may trump that anyway, but there are some concessions for like covenants on the face of the plan, so we'll learn, learn a little bit more about that as I go through the density piece and speak with our attorney about that piece as well too, and how we, how we apply that. So that may trump it anyway, but it's something to think about going forward if it's important to the board, if you feel it's an important part of the approval.
And that's fair enough, but it also is captured in condition one.
Right, I did point out condition one, and we discussed that, and that was not where they.
But you're right, I mean, it's if we explicitly want something, it's better practice to explicitly call it out, but.
Yeah, that's what I was advised, so. But yes, I did call out condition one, that was apparently not, not enough of a hook for this particular piece of zoning. So like I said, I just wanted to give you a heads up in case you hear from any of those abutters, but we're not in that position anyway. We are with what the board, sounds like what you're saying the board intended. I think that was the bulk of it for me. We do have a staff review committee meeting scheduled on May 15 to review the lot one residential, the residential lot in the Lewiston Road South Division, the one with the self-storage. He had come before us previously and is now coming before us again regarding the location of the well for the residential home. So that will be something you'll get an update on next time, we'll see where the committee lines with that.
Great. Is that, any other information from the board?
You just, you reminded me on that, I did receive an email today from Mr. Liberty, he sent me a few pictures of his self-storage development, and he had reported that it was complete.
The paving?
Uh, yep.
Yep, yeah, he has not reached out to me yet about that, but yeah, that is the final piece for inspection and that'll be, that'll be it for him.
Nice, okay. All right, we'll move on to public hearings then. First up is a public hearing to review proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, chapter 402, with regards to accessory dwelling units. Proposed changes include updating the maximum square footage of an ADU, editing references to comply with state law, updating table 402.5.3 regarding zoning district uses, adding references regarding exemptions from parking requirements, adding reference to home occupation use within an ADU, updating the definition of accessory apartments, and updating the accessory apartments section. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item?
Just very quickly, my name is Anne Gass, yeah, I live at 232 North Raymond Road, and I just wanted to comment on the square footage. I saw that you came up from a lower amount to 750. I think that's definitely heading in the right direction. I, you know, I'm not an expert on this and I don't plan to put in an ADU at my house, but, so I haven't really looked into it, but it does seem to me that, you know, there are a number of older houses in Gray that are much smaller, and it's possible that, you know, a resident might want to build a larger unit and rent out the smaller one and, and live in a larger one. So I just was putting in a suggestion for a larger square footage up to, you know, 900 to 1,000 square foot. That's it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Don't see anyone live, and I don't see anyone on the TV, so I will close the public hearing and ask the board if they have any comments. Tamara?
Just yet.
Okay, I can, I'll give you a pass. Melinda?
I actually liked a lot of the changes per conversation last time. I'm in favor of a larger size than the, I think, well, 660 before, so, so I liked it being a little bit bigger, but I especially appreciated the nuanced language around making sure that it was a single floor and that it couldn't be, you know, like one foot smaller than the primary, and so that, I thought there were some useful things that were done there, and I hope that they, I don't know if they, if they, they haven't had their public hearing yet, right? We have ours first, is that how that works?
They had a first reading, then we have a public hearing, then they have a second.
Okay, all right, well, anyway, I liked the changes that I saw, and I thought it's in a good direction, and, you know, a lot of it is dictated by the state law, so we don't have options there, but I think it'll be good, it'll improve housing, we need that. I, I thought these changes were good.
Thank you. David?
Agreed with the changes as well, thought they were good, and also agree with more housing, so don't really have any hard comments or anything on it.
I found my comments.
Ah, good.
I was actually curious about the one, the one floor, I feel like the economics of it, folks would most likely go to one floor, but the reality is that you'll have a smaller footprint on the land if you do two stories, and so, and that might allow for folks to, to make something work that still allows for the setbacks, so that was something that I was just curious about.
Yeah, I mean, I can respond to that.
Sure.
I think the, the single story was proposed because codes had advised that if you, that you could do the living space cumulatively going up, so you could have a multiple-story building that would be very large, leading to an ultimate square footage of like 3,500 or something, I'd have to look back at the memo, but that it could be very large. So we went to a single floor to propose to the council, which allows, allows you to do one above a garage, because it doesn't say it has to be floor height, but, but doesn't allow stacking to make it square footage far greater than what was intended by the square footage limit. So that was the idea there that the council supported, and Dan has provided to speak to that further.
I think that there's, it's unplowed ground, this whole effort, and I think the council's thought was to ease into it, wanting to provide a flexible ordinance so people would have, you know, the ability to do a lot, but there's a lot more in the ADU pipeline that we don't know about yet, so we thought this was a prudent sort of putting our tail in the water. And, you know, it can change as the ordinance changes, further rules come down, which there will be a lot more rules, I'm sure.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
I just had, I had a different type of comment, I had already provided them on the ordinance. I had read, or I shouldn't even say I read it, I skimmed it very quickly, there was an article, some, I don't even remember if it was in print or online, but it referenced this change, and as I'm sure you can imagine, a number of towns were sort of up in arms about the pace of the changes that were put forth from the state and also some of the content. And my understanding is there's a number of bills floating around that may do anything from revise to repeal different aspects of this. I guess my comment or my question is, you guys are, staff is doing a lot of work, that you've, you know, you've rushed to be compliant with this one, you have two more stacked up behind, and I just wonder if it's necessary to move that qu, this quickly to implement something that has some probably decent likelihood of changing. And perhaps, just to finish, and I don't even know if you can do this, but, so like, you're talking about if this goes to its second reading and it's approved, it's in effect June 15th, which is like 15 days ahead of when this law hits, but this law may not come through yet, you've already made changes to the ordinance that may not be necessary, and I just wonder if there's some discussion that you can or should have around having these changes actually follow whatever is actually implemented.
Well, the only change that we can really have in this round of the ADU ordinance is the upper limit of the size of the ADU. Beyond that, it's my understanding anyways, is that it's fairly, otherwise, there's not a lot of room to maneuver. So we wanted to, I guess the, from the council standpoint, we keep going on, focusing on the idea that these are accessory dwelling units, not primary dwelling units, and that, that I guess influenced, I think, most people's opinion. As to the date, you're absolutely right. You know, we try to comply with the rules that are put upon us, and who knows whether any of those three bills will pass or not. So I totally understand the concern about staff time, because there's a tremendous amount of stuff in the pipeline and a lot of work for staff to do, but, you know, as much as we don't like to have our authority taken away from us by things like this, I guess we feel a responsibility to comply, and that's what was driving it. And that's also why we wanted to put sort of the minimum into it, if you will. But your point's well taken. You know, if your crystal ball is better than any of ours, I'm happy to borrow it.
It's not, but I guess, yeah, like, so for example, I think you're also talking about a parking ordinance, which is probably partially driven by some of the, you know, call it a deficiency, or whatever you want to call it in this bill that maybe doesn't fit our town but fits other towns that wasn't thought through. And I guess my only point is, you know, it was somewhat rushed in, and there's going to be changes, and.
Well, I think there will be changes, I feel pretty good about what we have. I mean, I don't think that we'll necessarily be changing this aspect of it, unless other information comes down the pipe that I guess does that. We are talking about creating a traffic ordinance versus what we have now are sort of street ordinances. The ADU is definitely part of that, but it also plays into the Route 115 and Main Street projects, we're talking about creating one-way streets, we're talking about doing some other things, and all of those would end up in a traffic ordinance, so it's not the only reason we're looking at that, but it, it is, you know, driving the bus, for sure.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, I subscribe to the theory of doing the minimum to be compliant, because things will likely change, and I would also suggest that the timing follows whatever their timing is, so.
Well, with the seating of a new council on the 13th, this felt like the, getting it done on this timeframe was kind of really our only choice, because the makeup of the council will change in June, and so that will be a completely different council, so we thought we needed to finish it in this council's tenure.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So if, so the implementation on June 15th, that is designated by when it's last heard? Or can, could you say implementation would be June 30th based on state law staying in place?
Well, the charter drives are, are when our ordinance is going to affect, so at least that's my understanding. We, the only real sway we have with that is that we, if there's something in emergency, we can make it, but I don't think we have the authority to boot it out. I'll double-check on that, because I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty confident about that.
The charter is 30 days after second reading?
Yeah.
To your question, Dan, we were asked to start with ADU in part because it was something that was already on the books, accessory apartments already on the books, so it's kind of the low-hanging fruit to start with, and there are some concerns regarding application. I mean, because if, if nothing changes, and the legislature's always spinning on something, so if nothing changes and this does go into effect July 1, and we don't have our ordinances updated, it's hard for, it's going to be hard for staff, because we're going to have people saying this is state law, but this is our ordinance right now, so we're trying to address and get ahead of that, which is also why we're trying to address the rest of it in a timely fashion, assuming that it's going to, because we have to assume that it's going to go into effect. There are several bills, like you said, pending, some to exempt the smaller towns, which we would fall under, towns of 10,000 or fewer, other pieces to delay it by like a couple of years, but we just don't know. So we have to kind of plan on it being in place and people, knowing that it's in place and wanting to implement it, we need to know how, how we handle those as staff, so that's, it is a challenge.
Yep.
It is unfortunate, I mean, not to be disrespectful, but more and more of this stuff is coming out half-baked. I mean, we're still working on cannabis, how many years ago did that start? And that, we just had to change all of our, you know, the wording in the ordinance from marijuana to cannabis that came down from the state. It, and we've given that feedback to our representatives to the state, the council has, that, you know, it's, we can have a discussion about home rule and we can have that discussion, but when you create legislation and you don't write the rules, it's unfair, because you're asking people to vote on something that's not done yet, and I don't think they should pass legislation personally until they write the rules, but of course, we have no control over that.
Yep, that's all I had, so. All right, so I think we can close that public hearing then. Next up is a public hearing on Village Area Loop Trail Extension. This is a request by the Town of Gray for site plan review of a proposal to construct a walking trail, municipal use on the town-owned Gateway property on the northwest side of the intersection of Route 100 and Colley Hill Road, map 35, Lot 403, 027000 in the Village Center proper zoning district. This proposal is subject to conditional use and major site plan review.
Good evening, members of the board, if you can hear me. My name's Henry Hess, work with Spago Technics, here to represent the Village Area Loop Trail Network Trail Extension. Can run through a brief presentation, and then also can hand over to the board for feedback and any comments.
Are you hooked in to share your screen as well?
We're about to find out. I am hooked in, hopefully it should be sharing somewhere.
Hopefully so.
Excellent, so thank you for bearing with me there. My name's Henry Hess, Spago Technics, representing the Voltaire Loop Trail Site Extension here. A while back, there was that trail.
I'm just going to interrupt you for a second, because the sharing is on those monitors, but not this one, so if we can get that fixed or, I mean, I'm fine if you just turn one of the monitors.
We can see you on this one, but we can see you in person. Is there something I need to click?
Bring something up a little school.
Oops. That also works.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody able to see some portion of what we're presenting at the moment?
Yep.
Excellent. So a handful of years ago, there was that initial trail put in down in the village. This is, this proposal is to have the trail extended across the street, as you can see in the map here. We are actually located right down in this small building here on the map, and if we go across the street to the north, across 202, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Gateway property there, with the large barn on site. Further to the north is the school, just to orient you. The site itself is currently a large open field. Certainly have been out with members of staff and community, been out on the site, hearing feedback from those community members, staff, as well as representatives of the school adjacent to us, and even members of recreation and the T-ball leagues in town. As part of that, we're looking to expand that, that trail and put forth a proposal here in working with the different stakeholders and to create that trail. This trail is to be funded by a grant, and so it really is focused on the trail itself. I know this parcel has a number of different proposals and future plans that could potentially happen. This particular part of the project is focused on the trail itself, the trail network extension, and as part of that, the trail was kept to a lot of the perimeters of the site to leave the, the interior open and available for potential future development as, as the town progresses. With future plans, they will have that availability of the interior of the site while still providing a lot of pedestrian access and extensions of the, the walking recreation trails. As part of that site proposal, there is some signage at either end. You'll see it actually does start on two sides of what is Main Street there, there's two access points, one to the very south, and then kind of the southeast side there are mostly eastward, easterly side of the property. There will be some fencing to the abutters to the east there, just to provide some privacy for the abutters, some vinyl fence, sorry, wood privacy fencing along this property line here, even some shrubs and screening, and then vinyl, vinyl coated chain link fencing along the rear of the property, again, to just, if we are encouraging the public to move about trails, trying to be respectful of the neighbors there as well. Certainly did hear about some connections to the school from the trail, and as part of that, there was not a proposal to put a fence or any sort of gate there, but the goal was to deter pedestrians from just moving directly into the school, as there's a large gap there, in a large opening, not a gap, in the woodland edge that leads to the school. So as, as you round the corner on the trail, in the westerly side, northwest westerly side over here, I'm not sure if you guys can see where I'm pointing to. Let's see, whoops. There are a series of evergreen trees proposed there. Again, the goal is to, is to deter casual passerby's and the casual pedestrian from going through without being seen. It'd be very uncomfortable to try and crawl under something or get through a shrub without somebody noticing you coming out from behind the shrubs there. But the, the goal again being that, just to deter the pedestrians as they come around the corner to keep moving on the trail. But you'll see there's multiple access points along this trail here. The trail itself and the site plan has some proposals for landscaping as well, keeping it with endemic and native plantings, including elderberries and amalanques and maples. The goal being certainly non-toxic. There are a few edibles with high bush blueberries to provide not only an educational component, but again, keeping with something that's a little main native and appropriate for the site. There are areas on the trails for community engagement. That community engagement areas are located kind of on the northerly side. They can certainly be used by the community for all sorts of things, perhaps future installations of art or other items such as, that the community may decide. There's some minor grading to make sure that the trail does appropriately drain off the side and does not create ponding or pooling. But in general, the site does continue to drain as it does today. So the trail itself will not be creating a large impact on the site. And I do want to speak a little bit to that future use as well. I know there were some discussions about, you know, future uses and potential recreational uses. And so we did just want to make sure that, you know, part of keeping that trail to the outside, that we could actually, whether it's ball fields or multiple ball fields in the future, that programmatic element could still fit even with the trail. So we certainly were thinking about those future uses by the community and wanted to make sure that the trail could coexist with future uses. As I know this grant money is available now for the trail, which is why the trail is happening and why we're going through that process now. So I certainly, with that, I could certainly turn it back over to the board. I'll yield my time back to you with any comments, questions, and we'll take it from there.
Sure. Any initial questions from the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I was on the sidewalk and it was very snowy, so the corner, I had on boots. I thought I was prepared, but the snow was deep. My recollection of near the school, I'm trying to picture it now, but I can see where you've added plantings. My recollection is that the, kind of the gap was around that whole corner, but maybe I'm wrong. I'm just wondering where those, the larger, where those plantings on that corner end, in fact, is the existing brush heavy enough to block it at that point? So I'm just trying to remember. But I, it seemed like the school, there was someone from the school on the sidewalk and they did not want to, they wanted it to be, you know, to discourage people on the trail from wandering into the school because the school's going to be in session a lot of the year. So that would be my one question is, does those plantings really create a good block? Or do we need to pull them a little further? Because I just can't picture it and the conditions were a little trixie over there at that time.
Sure, yeah, I remember that sidewalk very well. Post holeing throughout the field, for sure. We, those, we've actually got those located as close to the property line as we can on that side.
Oh, gotcha.
They could potentially extend further down with a couple more evergreens to the south along property line. We felt that that group in there really did, as you come around the corner, keeps you on the trail and keeps you moving. You'd actually have to walk past and down and back to get around it. And again, with activating a space like this, certainly the more eyes on the trail, the more people, it certainly creates a very safe trail as well.
Yeah. Good, all right, good. I just wanted to make sure that we had done what they had asked for because it seems like a reasonable request. But we also make, take advantage of the trees and stuff that are there. There's no reason to replant things, then we already have things growing, so, good.
Just a follow-up question. So the way you describe that, it makes it sound like the trail's only going to be used in one direction. And so I'm curious about folks coming from the other direction. They're, you know, the opening is right there before they go around the corner, so.
Yeah, that was actually, my question is, is assuming going this way, there's a lot of existing shrubs. So it looks like the shrubs end, but in fact, there's a lot of existing kind of thick stuff.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that too. I might have misunderstood the question there.
No, that's okay. I, you, I guess I'm just wondering, where exactly, you did say there is a gap. And I'm curious where the gap actually is.
Sure, I can actually highlight that for you. Currently, it's just barely on the page here, the actual gap in the shrubs is right over in this area.
That's very helpful, thank you.
And that's beyond the town property line?
Correct, the town property line is right here.
Gotcha.
Oops, does not wiggle like that.
Okay, yeah, all right. That's helpful, actually, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, anything else, Melinda? I'll go to Tamara since she got started, so I don't know if you had any other questions?
I'm just curious if we heard from any other abutters, just in terms of the rest of the trail?
I mean, we haven't, we would have gotten it, which, I guess I was a little bit surprised that we didn't hear from the school on this, to tell you the truth.
We did not, again, we, I think I had shared with you the last we received from the school. It was a while back, the email. And they, I have met with the school multiple times and gotten their feedback about their concern of kind of wanting to be able to use the trail, but also not wanting people wandering onto the Russell School playground area. So we did try to address that. This, just to clarify, Henry, the space you're talking about where the plantings are, that's raised, correctly? We had talked about some berming there.
Correct, there is, it's about a two-foot berm there. And so that berm will help, again, kind of deter movement over it. But again, the shrubs and evergreen trees there should also help further deter that. Is it still possible to go that way? Yes, but the goal is to deter the general public.
Yeah, so as a feedback, I did make sure they were aware of the hearing tonight and sent them the information and the invite. I think we have a lot of their feedback. There's some excitement about being able to use the trail to connect more safely to rec behind panel. And we tried to address this concern regarding the playground access.
Okay, great. David?
Just one quick question. In the southwest side of the picture you have up there, it looks like the walking trail comes off in two different parts where it touches with the road. There are going to be crosswalks in those locations coming back to the original Gray Town Office and Recreation Complex?
That's a great question. Currently, there are not crosswalks proposed as part of the trail plans here. I know there is a crosswalk just down that does get you across the street about less than 100 feet from that secondary connection. But currently, no, there's not a crosswalk proposed there.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Chair?
We'll wait till deliberations, I think. Anything else?
No.
Okay, and that was my one question as well, was the crosswalk. So we'll revisit that one later, I think, or we will definitely revisit it. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so at this point, I'll open the hearing up to the public if there's anyone that wishes to speak on this topic. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Ann Gass, I live at 232 North Raymond Road in Gray. And in 2012, I started a bike ped committee in Gray. We hadn't had one before and it seemed like an important thing to have to start addressing some of our pretty serious bike and pedestrian safety issues. And so it was the bike ped committee that envisioned this, what we call the village area loop trail. And the initial loop, I got a grant from the state to build this initial loop. It's a third of a mile back behind here. And honestly, use of that trail has far exceeded my, you know, expectations. And in part due to the arrival on the scene of Mary Sweeney Underwood and her Nordic trekking pole group. And it just, they have, they go round and round and round this little third of a mile loop behind panel. We had always envisioned that the loop trail would, you know, cross Main Street and take in that area around what we now call the Gateway property. But we couldn't act on it until we could settle the ownership of it. And of course, the town bought it a few years, the voters approved the purchase of it a few years ago. And so I'm really excited about this proposal. I think Henry and his team have done a terrific job with it. We do anticipate having an additional crosswalk, I think, on Main Street because of the upcoming, you know, changes and improvements to Main Street that are still in process and we're still figuring out how to fund. You know, we didn't want to go ahead and put one in right now, but that definitely is planned. But the one that's directly in front of panel now will remain. And I also just wanted to point out, because it's not, it's not really that clear from the drawing here, but on the, on the kind of west side, I guess, the trail goes into the trees. It's well off, in about half that section, well off the existing field. And there's a really neat line of old pasture pines that the trail will go along beside, which is good because I think it provides some shade for walkers and it's just very, you know, attractive and scenic. So I think this is something we should move forward with. The town has worked hard to get this to this point and we have the Community Development Block grant that will pay for the improvements.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing any takers and there's nobody watching on TV, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for the feedback. So we've got a few items to go through here. I definitely do want to revisit crosswalks and we'll cover that later, but I think there's a couple procedural things that we can work through and get out of the way. The first one being whether we find the application complete or not. And then Kristin in Remo made a note with reference to some of the non-applicable items. I don't know if you wanted to expand on that at all, kind of the reasoning and what was marked as non-applicable.
Yep, the non-applicable items are listed in the first section of the packet, on the submission list. So most of them, this had to go to major site plan review based on the wording and the ordinance for the square footage. So when we did the calculation of the total square footage, because the trail is long and it's thin, it brought this up to major site plan review, but that process is typically, as you know, for a major site plan that would have a lot of elements that a trail does not. So as Henry mentioned, that there's not a stormwater impact. The payment of the fee is the town paying itself. That piece, utilities, there won't be any, no buildings, no driveways. Just some of those bigger picture, you know, solid waste disposal, parking, water sewage, exterior lighting, fire protection, traffic, groundwater, all of those types of things we're proposing as not being applicable. They would not normally be triggered for something like this, but because of the square footage, they were on the list. So putting that before you is being not applicable due to the nature of the application.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
The planting schedule was also listed as not applicable, but there is a planting plan with us, so I was just curious as to why that's not applicable.
There is, I think that was, the planting is like, is an integral piece of this proposal? Whereas a planting schedule is just more for like a, maybe a commercial development or something? You're certainly welcome to keep, hold that one aside and ask for one to be created.
Just wanted to understand.
I don't know if you, what your thoughts are on planting.
Yeah, I can see where, I believe where you're coming from there, Kristin, planting schedule for a larger site might actually entail the actual schedule of the planting, whereas there's also a planting schedule that is the schedule of plants on the plan. That's why I think there's a bit of both there. So the actual scheduled planting would be not applicable with the schedule on the plans. Absolutely applicable, perhaps the planting legend.
It seemed like a critical part of it.
Yeah, the planting legend is certainly applicable in the plans there. Thank you for bearing that.
All right, any other questions or comments on the completeness of the application? Anyone care to make a motion to find the application complete?
Mr. Chairman, I moved to find the conditional use application complete and produce and approve the conditional use for the town of Gray proposal to construct a walking trail for municipal use on the town owned Gateway property on the northwest side of the intersection of Route 100 and Colley Hill Road. Map 35, map 403-027-0000 in the Village Center proper zoning district. Proposal is subject to conditional use and major site plan review.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's four, nothing. You are complete. So next up is conditional use. So in their package, I don't have it written in front of me, but in.
Conditional use is in section eight of the supplemental package.
Thank you. So the applicant has provided their responses to the seven criteria for conditional use. And I guess I'll ask if anyone has any questions or comments on this or concerns.
I have a question that perhaps I should have asked earlier, but the member of the public spoken reminded me of having been on the sidewalk, I remember the existing shrubbery and bushes and trees. The hope was that the trail would take advantage of those and be within shade where possible. And I can't really tell from this how much it looks like, as I'm looking at the plan that is appointed to here, that I think is up on the, that it's all in the sun, but I don't think that's the case. Could you kind of talk us through where there will be actual shade? Because it was one of the things I really liked about the trail is how shaded it was going to be.
That is a great comment and I appreciate you bringing that up. Certainly, the trail is intending to move through the canopy lines in certain areas and be out of the sun. And I don't, I think this current rendering is a little, we went to highlight the trail and a little remiss in showing where that canopy line is, so if I could highlight that for you. A lot of the, where I'm highlighting is an existing canopy line to remain. In this area, this is all existing canopy line through here. So the goal would be that this will certainly be, on this end, the trail would be moving through and only needing to remove what is necessary to actually get the trail in place and not clear cutting it. And I think the rendering itself is a little remiss in showing that wooded buffer there or that woodland edge. In this portion of the trail along through here, it is proposed along the edge of the canopy line, whereas up on this side in the north there, where I'm now deleting some sections, is where that trail is actually proposed to be within the canopy line.
All right, thank you very much, that's helpful, that's consistent with my recollection.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Any other questions, comments, concerns around conditional use? Okay, would anyone care to make a motion on the conditional use approval then? Or not, sorry, not the conditional use approval, but it meets the conditional use criteria.
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody else is raising their hand.
I moved to approve the town of Gray's site plan to construct a walking trail.
So, yeah, that's the final approval.
Oh, okay.
So we need to find that the application meets the conditional use criteria. So number two in the discussion.
So that I'm not ready.
There is a motion.
I feel like that was the motion she just read.
I think that's the motion I read before. I jumped the gun, didn't I?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Yeah. But we voted in favor of it.
Well, no, that was to find it complete.
Yeah, that's right.
So, the next one, that was only to find it complete, which was what we were doing.
I said, complete and approve the conditional use, that's what it says.
Yeah, 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 okay. My fault, I missed that as well. Okay, so I think, I guess. We already did it. Yeah. Interesting, I think.
Are we okay with that?
Well, I think.
From a Roberts Rule standpoint, you can make a motion to rescind within the existing meeting.
I mean, I think we're going to find that it meets it. So it's, I'm just thinking procedurally, whether we can reaffirm that or, I don't know. I don't, never came up on this one, so.
No, but your intent is pretty clear, so.
I think, I think, let's just do another, a second motion and you can just basically read it that you. I think, I think, let's just do another, a second motion, and you can just basically read it that you...
I'll fix it.
Yeah, you find that it...
Let me try and fix it.
That it meets the provisions of 402.9.3, and we can vote on that separately. That's, I think, good enough.
I see, meet the provisions?
I would just state something like the, that the board find, make a motion that we find that the application satisfies the conditional use criteria outlined in 402.9.3F.
All right. I move to find the, I move to approve the conditional use for the Town of Gray proposal to construct a walking trail for municipal use on the town-owned gateway property on the northwest side of the intersection of Route 100 and Colley Hill Road, map 35, lot 403-027-000, in the Village Center proper zoning district. And consider the conditional use consistent with the requirements of section 402.9.3.
Dash F.
Dash F.
Is there a second?
I suck.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I think you get a few points for sticking with it and pushing it through.
You get what you pay for.
I thought so.
All right, number three, is the proposed buffering plan adequate to a butters? So I guess, I mean, I can start with this one. My assumption is yes, because we didn't get any letters or any discussion. And it sounds like from the sidewalk, there was discussion that happened there, so I'd be satisfied with that one. See, a yes from Tamara?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we don't need to vote on that. So any other concerns? And I'll, so crosswalks, I'll bring up here. And before I give my opinion, I have a question. So could you, could you scroll up? A little bit more, okay. So there's basically three terminations to the road and/or sidewalk. And if you could just orient us, I think if I go from left to right, or west to east, the first one terminates on the sidewalk, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the second one maybe terminates on the sidewalk?
They all do.
Okay.
All three of them will.
So all three terminate on a sidewalk, okay. Part B of the question is, on the opposite side of the road, where are there, like, I know there's a trail connection somewhere up near Colley Hill. Is it opposite the middle one? Like on the other side of this building?
It is right about here, if I can show you on the map here.
Okay, so that has a, basically it terminates, and then there's another termination across, directly across the road. Okay. The one further up, 100, there's, there's no trail aspect or sidewalk.
On the far side.
There's a sidewalk on the opposite side of the road? I didn't think so.
It's on that side. That sidewalk runs all the way up to where that...
No, I understand that, but what I want to know is what's on the other side? Is there a sidewalk or a trail?
I don't believe there is a sidewalk on this side over here.
No, there's nothing on, further beyond Colley Hill Road.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then, so back to the first one. What is opposite that, or does that already align with the crosswalk that's in that area?
Yeah, that particular one does not, that's actually almost, I'd probably show you really quick on the other map. There's a little bit more context for you. The only downside is it doesn't have the trail on it.
Do you have the gateway map, Henry?
Not available on my laptop.
We've got that online. That might be a helpful thing to pull up.
Let me see if I can get... So this is that third termination right here.
Yep.
And this is our, this is the building here, the panel building. The crosswalk itself, near the panel building, is located right here. For reference, so that's the trail coming down. You would walk down this direction to access a crosswalk if you wanted to cross.
And in that area, there's crosswalk on both sides, correct?
There is a sidewalk on both sides, correct.
Yeah, sidewalks.
Yep, in this area.
Yeah. Okay.
All the way down to Colley Hill there.
So my feeling is there should be a crosswalk in that location and the Colley Hill location, but not the third one, the most northerly one.
So if I could recap, just so I'm clear, sorry to zoom in and out here. So you feel that the need is for a crosswalk at this location? And this location?
Correct. So in the reasoning, my reasoning would be that at the Colley Hill one, there's a continuation of the trail on the other side of the road. So I think it's likely that people would cross there. And then I understand that people, you know, could be asked by signage to come to the sidewalk, walk down the road and cross, but it just seems doubtful to me that people are going to want to do that. I would think that people like to take the most direct route, which is to cross the road where they're at and not go out of their way. That's me, but we can cover specifically sidewalks now, I think, with the board, and see what others think. Anybody want to start? David?
I guess. I agree that the sidewalk to the far right where the road starts to split, there should be one there, because it does appear that the other trail that goes around the recreation complex does meet there, so it'd be good to have the connection point there. And as for the left one, I'm a little indifferent of it. I do agree, people might not just walk down the sidewalk and use the existing, or down the sidewalk and use the existing crosswalk, they might just cross the street there. So I agree, having those two locations is probably good compared to just having the one that exists down the sidewalk a bit.
I'll go in order.
I, on the, where, across from where the existing trail is, people will cross there. That will happen, and having a crosswalk would hopefully make that safer. I also am cognizant of the fact we're trying to do a lot of work in that area. I don't know how much, how difficult it is to add a crosswalk and what that entails and what it means to undo it later, but I have to think a crosswalk will end up being there to connect those two trails forever, you know, that's just a natural thing to happen. The second one, I'm a little bit less dedicated to. I think if people are at the panel complex, they'll cross at their first opportunity if their goal is to get to the trails, and that's going to be the one that exists, and then they'll walk down the sidewalk. It's, so I'm a little bit less worried about an extra crosswalk there. But for sure, I am in agreement that we want to connect the two trails with a crosswalk. I think it would be inviting trouble if we don't do that, so.
Tamara?
I agree. I'm most concerned with the middle one.
Yeah. Yeah, I do too. Can you, can we look at, can you scroll up again? I want to just be oriented to the...
You would just be, or are you looking for the other map to add a panel?
Nope, that one's fine. I just, what I wanted to better understand is what's directly opposite the one on the left.
This one here?
Yeah.
That is pretty much, almost exactly the, this portion of the building, the panel building, is directly opposite that trail. It's probably more in line with just that side of it where the trail comes right through.
How did, okay. Okay, so the existing crosswalk is over here.
Correct.
Next to the, near the lab, basically.
Yep.
Okay. I, yeah, I could, I'm 100% on the one in the middle. I think that one, where you're crossing in the trail, that one needs to be there. I could, I could get behind, not the other one, based on, I think people are going to be crossing here. I was a little bit, I wasn't quite oriented to where that was.
Could certainly, I could use the other map and try and give you some place markers.
No, I have it now. So I don't, I think, I mean, the clear feedback from the board is you need a crosswalk on the middle one that attaches over there.
Yeah, so at the very least, what I'm hearing from the board is at least the middle pathway, looking for a crosswalk.
Yeah. Okay, so that was specific to crosswalk. Is there any other, anything else on the project the board wanted to discuss?
I guess, I'm just curious to hear from the council in regards, or Kristin, in regards to the upgrades to, you know, and, you know, this has been in progress, so were you already envisioning that a crosswalk is going in here?
I'm happy to speak to the crosswalk if you would.
Sure.
As Anne mentioned, the crosswalk is, was part of, part of our original vision for this. It ended up being outside of the scope because the Main Street project is pending right now with DOT. It would require a traffic study to put in a crosswalk, which is outside of the scope of this grant. So this grant was focused on the trail, and we recognized that we need a crosswalk to connect the two legs of the trail across the street, obviously. And that was, like I said, it was originally part of this plan, but when we got into it, it was requiring an entire engineering study. It was going to be way outside of the scope of what we would be able to do for this, for this leg, with this grant, under this grant program, which is why we focused on the property itself. And I think, right, Henry can speak to that, it was on our original, I think, the things that we sent out to for the RFP, that we were hoping to incorporate it, but that it was not something that we could do right now with the pending work that's being done on Main Street, because that intersection, there's talk about realigning potential, and Dan can speak to that more, I'm sure. But it was not something that was feasible to do at this time. We struggled with that a little bit, with this, this trail being done first, before the rest of the development, before the work on Main Street. So we're trying to make the progress that we can in between all of the other pending elements that are going on. And I don't know, there may be a potential for doing something temporary, but I don't know what our liability would be with that if we, you know, pending a traffic study, an engineering study about the movement right there, because that is, that's a touchy spot as well. So encouraging crossing there right now without a, some sort of study that would be outside of the scope of this grant would be, would be a second step that would be another piece. So that would be something I'd have to do some research on.
This is a great project, and I don't want to hold it up, but ethically, I cannot and will not get behind a trail that connects on both sides of the road without a crosswalk, just, I'm not going to do it. If you can not build some portion, or close some portion, I mean, find a way to do it, but to have two connections that are directly across for a public trail without a crosswalk, I don't think we're doing our job to allow that.
Do you, is there something that you would be able to propose as far as like signage, or boulders, or something else that would redirect the pedestrian traffic that would work for the board? Or Henry has ideas?
So if you didn't build the end part, or there were some, I mean, it needs to be a real, you know, something real that like this doesn't exist, not, not like a sawhorse that's put up that says do not cross here. I mean, I think it's great, I don't want to, you know, it's unfortunate that you're in this position, but our job is to be protecting health, self, health, safety, and welfare, and to promote a connection like that. It's, I just, you know, if something happened, I would feel like we didn't do our job.
Without...
But I'm open to, you know, finding a way around it.
Is there, is there a means in which that middle section of trail, where it currently ends, or should, let me rephrase that. Sometimes I just can't think without a pen in my hand.
And it's eight o'clock.
At this particular section here, where the trail splits and it goes down to the middle section, I might need to zoom in for you a little bit. Would it be open to saying that that portion, you know, under conditional use, that that portion gets constructed at the time that proper traffic study has been done? Certainly, that's my first inclination, but...
That was my initial idea, but I didn't really want to propose not building that much of your trail. But that was the first thing that came to my mind, was don't build that section until you can do the crosswalk. I think that, personally, I think that's the best, that would be the best solution to doing this, right? I don't know if that's acceptable to the applicant, and I don't know how that, well, we can't really, it's not our role to consider costs and things like that, so I'm not even going to ask the question because it can't come into our decision-making, how that affects your, your building. That, I think, is the best solution from a safety and procedural standpoint. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, without, certainly without the traffic study being there and going through that process, it would be a little trickier to get the crosswalk there. And that timeline certainly, I think, would be outside of, or be hard to, it's hard to estimate at this time what there, not that study would be able to happen during the grant funding. I'm leaning towards it probably wouldn't be able to happen during that time of grant funding, so maybe that part of the trail doesn't actually get built under the funding. And at that point, it would be built under separate funding.
Open to other ideas, I mean, sorry to do that, but...
Would you please zoom in to that section of the trail?
Yeah. I mean, signage maybe, but it needs to be something.
Good, I mean, signage certainly, you know, the two posts with the chain and the sign that said, "Please use crosswalk."
Well, you have the, you have the sidewalk going for you, so people can use the sidewalk.
Please use crosswalk at...
Point, yeah, my point is there's a trail directly across the road. And for people that want to, it's, it's the VALT, it's the Village Area Loop Trail, so people are going to want to do the loop. I mean, that's a reasonable thing that someone would do, so.
I have an idea.
Yeah, sure.
All right, I don't know, it's kind of, so I can see that there's, I think it's the little loop of landscaping there near, on this loop is where a bench would maybe go.
Yeah, right here.
So my recollection of the sidewalk, the Sawyer property, sort of like at that area is where their parking kind of starts and where it feels like there's some change, right? So if we built, it would be a dead end trail. But if, if we build that trail, they will cross at that, they will cross. People will absolutely do it. They will do it. They, even if you didn't build the trail, they might do it, but if you built, it's just an invitation. It's going to happen, and I'm with the chairman that that's, that's not what we want to be doing. But I think there is a way that you, you could build to that point, and then you would still use more of the grant money, construct more of the trail, and you could have it terminate, although it would be strange, and people would say, "What the heck was the town thinking to stop it at this point?" We would have our reasons for it, and I think it visually could sort of have an endpoint that, that wouldn't invite people to cross over. It would make it less of an invitation, because you'd be sort of stopping at a bench as opposed to just, you know, stopping in the middle of nowhere. So that, that's, I don't know, maybe an alternative. And then you get a big portion of that trail, you know, you only have the little, that last bit that runs along the Sawyer parking lot, basically, that doesn't get built. And then maybe you build that later when the crosswalk goes in, and it wouldn't be as expensive, because then you don't have landscaping to put in, you just have, and maybe you even grade it, but you just don't put... Cause then you don't have landscaping to put in, you just have, and maybe you even grade it, but you just don't put the stone dust, or some, I don't know. I don't know what to, but if we build that trail, they will cross at that point, that will happen.
Potentially, if we were to expand some landscaping along that crossing there, so the trail dead ends into landscaping, so there is a buffer.
Right.
As a possibility, so what, what would need to be constructed at that point outside of the budget would be relocation of landscaping. And maybe ten to fifteen feet of trail.
Yeah.
So, alternatively, I would recommend that the trail would get built per plan with signage telling people to go to the crosswalk in the interim down by Pendle, until which time the traffic study can be completed and a crosswalk can be put in.
I'll wait for the board, I want the board to go first.
No, absolutely, just letting you know.
So, something like that seems reasonable, I just, I really, and of course, you guys can outvote me, I'm only one vote. So, I'm putting it out there, but if it terminates to crossing the street, it's, I, I'm not gonna vote for it, just from that alone, but.
And, actually, just best practice right now in terms of trail construction and all, is to have more benches and, and places where, and kind of endpoints. And, you know, places of interest, so I like the idea in terms of the landscaping with the bench. And I would feel comfortable with it going there, but I would not feel comfortable with it. Even with signs, people, like, it's just human nature, you want the most direct route to where you're headed.
So are, are you thinking like a bench that's set back how far, roughly?
Well, the bench is planned, right.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, to that?
So you're, you're proposing to terminate back here in this location?
That, that was what. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it were, I mean, maybe a little bit further, but it's kind of a mark, because that's where the parking lot ends for Sawyer. So it's sort of, kind of a natural place.
If, if the trail were to be constructed a little further, and this is just, if we were to keep spitballing here, to, again, kinda closer to that edge of parking lot down in this location. Uh, and then landscaping were to be completed in front of it. So you're still terminating it, but again, getting you down to the, the least amount of trail that might be built outside of the scope. You'd be terminating it, you could put a bench there and landscaping. I, I think at that point, in, in either direction, if, if you're terminating the trail at the first bench, or down closer to the road. Anybody walking along the trail would potentially keep walking across the grass, no matter, you know, unless we put something like landscaping in their way.
So I think that would be okay, I think what you need is a legitimate trail termination. Something that, you know.
Trail and signs?
Yeah, I mean, I would include that, I would say trail end.
Yeah.
Something that's, if someone decided to not, you know, at the end of the trail, there's a sign, they walked around landscaping, they walked over grass. At some point, they've taken their own responsibility for what they're doing. I think, to me, I think that's enough.
And there is a nice existing tree there, the big shade tree, which could be a nice place for another bench, to be honest, even long term. It's right on the road, but.
Would, would the board like to put a measurement on it? So it's ten foot before the sidewalk, twenty feet before the sidewalk with landscaping? Uh, or would just, you know, terminating before sidewalk and with landscaping as a bit of a condition there? Would that meet the board's approval?
Three paces.
Can you maybe zoom in, are you able to zoom into that leg a little bit?
I, I've got a scale on it too, so we can actually figure out how far ten and twenty feet might be.
That might help them kinda visualize, especially those run on the sidewalk.
Yeah, let's see. So, from the sidewalk, back to, let's call it way back, there's about, I'll just round it up. That is about a hundred feet there. Uh, and that's back to that first bench. And alternatively, there was the discussion about, uh, from sidewalk to about ten to twenty feet back. So if I meant somewhere in the middle and did about fifteen. Fifteen feet off the trail, you know, with some landscaping in there with a termination sign.
Twenty feet feels about right to me, it's probably from here to the first row of chairs, but ten, ten feet's not enough.
Yeah.
Fifteen's probably okay. I mean, it's, we wanna get you as close to completing your project, but still be legitimate, so.
Have some safety involved, of course. That could terminate with a landscaping similar, you know, to what's represented in the rendering. We just have that included around the shade tree there.
Yep.
And then at the time that that trail does get completed, the, they'd have to have the removal and relocation and landscaping. And of course, the structure of the trail.
So I'm stating the obvious, but I'd suggest landscaping that you were planning to use somewhere else later. I mean, that, I think works, like, twenty feet, I mean.
I like twenty.
Twenty feet bench landscaping and signage that indicates trail end, that would, that would do it for me. Dan, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the concern for the public safety. A snowball in you-know-where doesn't have a chance of getting a crosswalk there through MDOT now, given all the work that is gonna be happening at Main Street. I guess I'm more of a stronger believer in personal responsibility. My younger twelve-year-old brother was killed crossing the road in a crosswalk, so it doesn't hold a lot of water for me. I think you're kidding yourself if you think twenty feet of grass is gonna stop somebody from walking up to the crosswalk and crossing the street, personally. And you gotta think of it from the kid's point of view. The kids, if you end it there, they're gonna cut through the parking lot of the existing business, if they're riding their bikes. If you really wanna chop that off, my suggestion is to continue it around back to the beginning of the furthest. If you can zoom back out so you can see the whole project, just continue it across the fields to where those trees are in the upper right-hand corner. Make a, a loop out of it, and just don't get near the road. Someday, that piece of it obviously probably will change, but it could be there fifteen years before anything happens, who knows? And then you make a loop of that, and people could walk around that. So that's just a thought, I know you're pretty well far down the road as far as dead ending the, the trail.
Where are you suggesting?
I would suggest continuing it at the corner where it bends back to the road, and just go across the field over and connect to where the trees are in the upper right-hand corner. And just have a loop there, with the access point being the furthest entrance on the right, and the furthest one on, I mean, furthest one on the left and the furthest one on the right. That would be my suggestion, cause you end at twenty feet, fifteen feet from the road, and they're just gonna keep walking. I mean, I honestly don't think that is much of a barrier. And I prefer not to see a lot of signs, because frankly, a lot of signs get put up and people just walk around them anyways, so. I think it would aesthetically be a nicer solution, myself, but.
So, despite being far down the road, I think that's a better idea, so thank you for sharing that.
It wouldn't extend the length of the trail too much, so I don't know what that does to your budget, but.
Yeah, it'd certainly be a limited extension overall. What you'd end up with is, you know, if the trail were to connect back down as it does in the plan today, you'd have that built at a future date.
Yeah, and you could just build a short connector to that once the cross, there will be a crosswalk there someday. It is in the plan, Colley Hill Road right now looks, there's, the Colley Hill Road, that intersection may well be a roundabout, we don't know for sure.
So, I'll speak, for me, I think that's a better solution in keeping with the either, either don't build it, which was the first idea, or do that. Either one, either one of those works for me, and I think is, I mean, I know it's not exactly what you planned, but I'm just, you know, I know this is the town, I know it's a good thing, but if it was a developer coming in here and wanted to do something, hundred percent the board would be saying, you need to put a crosswalk there, or have one there. So, to me, until there's a crosswalk there, trails shouldn't terminate. And I, I totally agree with your personal responsibility statements, I'm a hundred percent.
We've had this discussion before.
Hundred percent behind them, but there's still, we need to do our job, so.
Yep.
Sure.
Just a couple things about current use, before it's developed, has, has typically been parking for the Blueberry Festival. I was wondering if that would be compatible with that, or if it's gonna get destroyed with people parking on it with vehicles? If that's not something we want, I just wanna throw it out there. And also, I don't know if you can show the overlay again about the potential baseball fields, and how that would come into play with that? It wouldn't hit that, okay.
Yeah, I don't think there would be a conflict with, particularly a baseball field, I mean, if, if there were baseball fields there, I mean, yeah, that wouldn't seem a loop being.
I mean, you could cut it straight, more straight across from corner to corner if you want, still not interfere with the ball fields. Leave more of the frontage for parking, if you wanted to do that.
But we also don't, we don't have any information at this time related to parking and road access for the ball field, should they come to fruition? Which is why we're trying to stay out of the middle entirely.
Yeah, we know, I understand. It would be a part that would, yeah, get, it would change eventually, it wouldn't be a permanent solution. It would make, I think, for a nicer park in the shorter term.
Well, and it always could shift when the crosswalk goes in as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, the ballpark is down the road, and, yeah.
The ballpark, yeah, the ballpark's actually might be sooner than later. We are vying for a Major League Baseball grant to build the two fields, and we've put enough money in the budget for FY24 to do the matching part of that if we actually get the grant, so that could be sooner than later. Hard to say.
So, I guess, are either of those two options acceptable to the applicant? Do you need to consult with folks from the town to answer?
I think I would certainly wanna make sure that the town's on board with that. I, I would initially, my gut would say that either one of those is most likely acceptable, barring that there's no major conflicts. But I would certainly wanna make sure that we're checking with the applicant on that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you guys, in a large way, are the town. And we have Anne here who created the rest of the trail for her, but.
I mean, you know.
So it's certainly not, I don't, I don't know, that's a call for staff to make, if you have input on what you think is best for the town, you guys have a town, so.
Well, we're, I mean, we're one part of it, we're not the applicant. So we, we're looking at it at a different lens than, than you are, and you guys did the work to get the grant, and you wanna maximize that value. But that's, that's not a part of what we look at, unfortunately, so.
I think it's partly a question of what, do you wanna spend the grant money on something that we know is going to have to be eliminated? Potentially in the shorter term than we might be thinking, or do you wanna just cut it somewhere?
So that's not our discussion, I mean, here.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one thought, so if we, it kinda depends where you cut across. But if you either move the bench, or have a bench feature before you come, come across, then you get the benefit of another bench. I, I like, even though on the one hand, I, rework sucks. So the idea of building something that we know isn't gonna last hurts my heart. But, at the same time, I, I do think if we, if we build, there's, there's gonna be crossing there. And if we loop it across, it will, there will be less. I'm not saying nobody will, but they will, there will be less. So that would be my only thought, is to, you know, to the extent that you're within the grant amount, you could preserve another bench somewhere in there. It is, you know, maybe you move it up or something, I don't know, I'm just tossing out there. I, I like the idea of a bench, and it wouldn't wanna have to sacrifice that if we could get that within the grant. That's it.
Did you have something else, Dan?
Yeah, just to, the council does have to vote in order to apply for a grant, so they'd have the support of the council. Though obviously, the plan wasn't set before you, and I, I will confess, I, I voted against applying for the grant. In part because of what we're talking about, who knows what will happen with this property, and it felt like the cart before the horse. I also felt that way about the pocket park over behind Nanny's, cause we're gonna, we're gonna eat some of that when we fix 115. I, I hear what you're saying about the rework piece, but I think there's always, there's so many moving parts that it's almost impossible to do something without having to rework something. And where you're talking about such a relatively small part of the overall project, for what people will gain for the time that it's there, I, I, I think I would encourage you to go ahead with it, because, you know, the future is uncertain. The, the project for Main Street and Route 115 now is approaching twenty-five million dollars. We are going to apply for a federal prize grant, because obviously, we can't afford twenty-five million dollars. So, you're looking at possibly 2028, before Main Street is done. It's another five years away, so people will enjoy it for five years before.
Right, so we're, we're starting to get outside of our.
Yeah, could I offer, if, if we were to connect, I love the idea of having that loop connect. I think that's, that's a simple solution without much additional trail. And at which time that there was a crosswalk there, and the construction did happen on Main Street, about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet of trail at that point is not too far outside the scope of, of what would probably be crossing signals, lighted, lighted signs, crosswalks, mallards. And then about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet of stone dust trail, as a part of that project, makes a lot of sense. With a limited additional cost to this loop trail in terms of the, it's a little bit more trail to go across there for the loop. Certainly the balance between safety and creating a full loop now. With the trade-off being, yeah, you'll have to, to build a portion of it perhaps as part of what would be that crosswalk and further Main Street improvement at that time. And maybe at that time when that crosswalk is there, that two hundred to three hundred, sorry, what did I say? Hundred and fifty to two hundred linear feet of stone dust trail connection might make a lot of sense. I know that unless there's signage on the existing trail to the south, telling people not to cross that currently terminates over there at that sidewalk, there's still a chance they may cross there anyway.
Yeah, that, that one, I, that one, for me, I think I'm, I'm okay with, because there's not a trail directly on the other side of the road.
Gotcha.
That's the difference. And, and the Colley Hill, that corner, there's, it's the same trail, it's part of the same network.
Yep, I hear that.
So, that, that's the difference. So I think, so you've got your feedback from the board, it sounds like either not building that section, or, or diverting it. Something similar to what you've shown there would both be acceptable to us. I think there's no other, there were no other concerns with the project from anyone?
No.
So, I think if you consult back with whoever at staff, and come back with that revision, I think you're good to go with either one of those options.
Excellent.
Whatever one.
Is that something the board can consider tonight to keep the project moving forward as a condition?
That was my next question.
Yeah.
Voted with one or the other, doesn't matter to you?
To eliminate the connections.
If we'd be able to work with staff on that, that issue to revise that.
I'm fine with that, we just need to be able to describe it accurately, so. If you wanted to put something like.
Like eliminate the trail leg that connects with the existing.
Can we refer to, well, can we, can we refer to a, we should be able to refer to a drawing in the motion, right?
Yeah, this is what the site plan.
So.
Yeah, this is a copy of the.
So if you, if you took, if you take this right now and draw, like, draw an A at the intersection, go left. Okay, well.
I just gotta get it on there first, and then I will move it right where you're talking about there.
You can just draw it on here, with the crystal.
That's fine, yeah, and now put B, at the, pick your new termination, all the way up, go all the way up, yeah? Like that A or whatever. Like that A or whatever. And then put a C at the other intersection, go left. Right there.
Yep.
So, our motion could read something to the effect of either not building section AC or replacing AC with BC. Does that make sense to the board?
Replacing AC.
So, I'm saying we.
With AC with BC.
Uh, so the condition could be that they build it either by deleting section AC or replacing AC with BC, okay? Does that make sense?
Replacing AC with BC.
Well, they, they may, as far as we're concerned, if they didn't build that section, that's also safe and fine. They may, or it depends whether they wanna build less trail and not use all of their grant money. Or they may not, for some reason, wanna build trail that has a likelihood of rework, so if we do it that way, they can do either.
Oh, I see.
So, building C down to the connection to the sidewalk as shown where the circle is, is acceptable?
Yep. It's only deleting.
Either.
Either delete AC or delete it and replace it with BC.
Or replace AC with BC, okay.
All right.
It's a little bit, I don't like doing stuff like this, but it's keeping you guys moving forward.
All right, ready?
I'm ready.
Go for it. I move to approve the Town of Gray site plan to construct a walking trail for municipal use on the town-owned Gateway property on the northwest side of the intersection of Route one hundred and Collie Hill Road, map thirty-five, lot four oh three dash zero two seven dash triple zero in the Village Center proper zoning district. This proposal is subject to conditional use and major site plan review and approval is subject to the following conditions. The project shall be constructed, operated, and maintained in accordance with the plans, submissions, and testimony presented to the planning board by the applicant and its representatives, and either delete trail AC, section of trail AC, or replace section of trail AC with section of trail BC.
Then I guess if you just reference the site plan revised by the applicant at the meeting?
Uh, referencing the site plan revised by the applicant.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It's four or nothing. Glad we could work through it, sorry to be a pain, but no.
I appreciate the feedback, and I look forward to work with you further, thank you.
All right. Where are we here? One more. So, this is a public hearing. Uh, no, this is not a public hearing, this is new business. This is a sketch plan for Stillwater Pines Phase Two. This is a request by AH Grover, Inc., represented by Steve Robersh of SJR Engineering, Inc. For Planning Board Sketch Plan Review of a Proposal to Create Phase Two of the Stillwater Pines Residential Open Space Subdivision on the thirty-six point two nine acre parcel off Woodcock Road, map forty-four, lot oh three two dash one twelve dash zero 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 in the medium density zoning district. This proposal is subject to major site plan review and major subdivision review and a contract zoning agreement. Do we have an applicant?
Good evening, my name's Steve Robersh, I'm the owner of SJ Engineer, SJR Engineering, and I brought my whole company here today. You're looking at it. The other person I wanna introduce is Ben Grover, he's the owner of the project. Probably all know him, he owns AH Grover Construction Company, does a lot of development in this area. And I'm pleased to be associated with him in presenting Phase Two of the proposed subdivision that's here before you tonight. One of the first things I, I wanna do is try to locate where we are with relation to where our subdivision is. And I, I didn't know that we had the ability to put TV stuff on. I don't know if you wanna do that.
I can, I can maybe screen share via the boards.
It might be easier to see, and I can.
Or you could certainly bring it up in front of the board if you'd like.
I mean, we've got full-size plans here.
Okay, all right. Oh, that was the other thing, I didn't know. I didn't know you wanted the eleven by seventeen prints by me, you all.
Hey, where are they?
And if, and if you get gray beard like I do, the big ones really help a lot, so. So anyways, we got Route one fifteen along the side here, and there was an existing road, Woodcock, Woodcock Road that came in before Ben became associated with the project. And he was with another, another partner, they purchased a piece of property that entailed, I'm not sure, I can't remember off the top of my head, how many, sixty-eight acres, I believe, off the top of my head. And decided to come to a contract, get into a contract zone with the Town of Gray to develop this piece of property for residential housing. And in turn, would be able to take the portion of property that's basically on the other side of the stream that's down here and turn that into fields that could be used for the, for the Town of Gray. So, they entered into that contract and, and it was codified. So, what happened was Phase One was presented to the town two or three years ago. It was approved and has been fully constructed out at this point in time. At, at that point, one of the partners has been bought out. Ben is the sole, sole owner of the remaining piece of land that's there. And what he wants to do is build Phase Two of that, of that parcel. Now, part of the contract parcel that was entered into with the, with the town was that up to fifty units of, of housing could be built along the access road. And I, I just point that out at this point in time, there were nine that were existing, and there's thirteen that are already approved from Phase One. Some of the highlights that are located on, on the plans, there are heavily wooded areas that are out there. The development is, is typical, nice development in town. All the roads, I mean, all the houses are centered pretty much on the middle of each of the lots with the driveways that come into the houses, leaving the remainder of the parcels still in their wooded condition. There are walking trails that have been approved, and I'm not sure if they've been constructed or marked at this point, but they would be or will be. And so, that was Phase One. Phase Two is gonna be basically the same scenario, except we're, instead of having just thirteen units in here, we'll have twen- we're proposing twenty-two units at this point. And the twenty-two units will be coming off of two different, brand-new roads. Right now, the road comes to a T-turn dead end. We will be building a Stillwater Drive dead end to the end of the property, or to the sideline of the property. And then another Woodcock Road extension to basically another dead end at that point. The dead end would be extended as a future access area to the Town of Gray Ball Field area in this location. And it also has the possibility of being extended with a future access road that may, at some point in time, connect back out onto Route one fifteen. So, that's, well, I, this is the only plan that shows this. When we get into it, we'll, you, you'll understand why I'm talk, what I'm talking about. When we start to figure residential density on the project, the entire parcel that was in this area is in a deer yard area. And that's denoted on our plan, that's, that's on the overview page. The next page is the approval of Phase One subdivision.
Yep.
And so you can see that this, this is the existing, existing road. Phase One development has been created, comes to a dead end. And our, our new developed area will be coming off of each of those legs of the, of the dead end. One of the Phase One proponents was that they included a common park area that is at the end of the, the T-turn. And what we've decided to do with Phase Two portion is to continue this road access along that to provide a, a nice, long area of, of road access for, for potential parking or anything like that for people that would use the common park area. This plan has, Phase One has sidewalks on the side of it, it has public water, it has septic systems. It has stormwater detention areas. We are gonna replicate the same scenarios for utilities and environmental improvements that were done on Phase One. Hit the next page, I believe is. The soil, is it the soils? Yep. We have had Mark Hampton come and do a high-intensity soil survey of the parcel. He was the one that was involved with the septic and, and soil surveys on Phase One. He also did it for our parcel of land just beyond the Pleasant River stream area. The, the area that's beyond it, that we're not utilizing, that is being used as a gravel pit has not been, has not been soil mapped, but it's a gravel pit, so it probably falls under that soils category. He's also gone out and located test pits for each of the lots that we have proposed on our plan. And we're utilizing each of those septic sites in each of those type, different types of soils to come up with a net residential density, which is the next page, I believe. I gotta tell you, net residential density calculation, you gotta really pay attention to what you have written in your ordinance, because it, it can get convoluted with time. We provided a breakdown of how we arrived at the net residential density. It's, the, the legend at the top is color-coded, it's exactly the same as what you have in, in your land use ordinance. And you can see where each of the items either didn't apply or we applied something to them based on the color codes that are in the, in the legend. And then when you come to the graphic, the graphic is color-coded to show that each of those areas have been counted and included in the square foot area that's in, in the legend. One, uh, when we did the total of the property for density, we came out with, including some bonuses when we have trails and, and whatever. We came up with a total of thirty-one total lots that potentially could be here based on the types of soils and the density that we could calculate. We're not going after that, we're only going after twenty-two of the lots that are there. So, these twenty-two, plus the thirteen original, plus the, I mean, thirteen in Phase One, plus the nine in the original road, keep us under the fifty-foot allotment for the contract zone condition. One of the plans that you do not have is this one here. It's the same plan as the net residential density calculation, without all the color to it. It basically is the next step that we are hoping to get to with the planning board, showing how the houses could be located on each of the lots, how the driveways might be potentially located, how the house, how the driveways and the houses are located with respect to the septic systems that are out there. And then we actually have, the next meeting that will come in, will have road plan profiles drawn for each of the proposed roads, showing the storm drainage system, which will be closed drain. We'll have curving on both sides of the road, draining to catch basins. And they'll come down to a, a stormwater detention area in this location, and another stormwater detention in this location. Both of them down near the ends and the low points of the property, the, the ends of the road. Trying to think what else might be there. We do have open space that adjoins the open space for Phase One, so we've got another open space that would be in this area. Another open space that would come down along this area, continues down along here. And then, then we got the fifty-foot open space required as part of the contract zone. We have also, remember I was talking about Phase One had a common park area that was larger than fifty thousand square feet. From my understanding and reading, the report, the staff report, fifty thousand square feet would be enough to suffice for, enough area to suffice for Phase One and for Phase Two in this development. Part of the reason why the common park area is located where it was, was because they always knew that Phase Two was gonna happen. So, this is, this is kinda centering the area for the common park area to have some type of development happen that would be unique to, to this area. We have more available land that could be utilized for common park area that we're proposing in Phase Two that is adjoining to that, so. So, these areas are all relatively easily developed, relatively flat, wooded areas that could be used for park areas, picnic areas, what, you know, whatever. The other thing that I wanna point out is, as part of the contract zone development, and it was approved in, in Phase One, was that this future access road that comes down, crosses Pleasant River, we have, there's already an approved stream crossing for this, and that this lower area that was, that's gonna be given to the Towne Gray is to be developed into a multipurpose field, I guess, for lack of, of anything specific. So, this is an area that helps to promote the recreational value for this neighborhood that's in here, along with something that's different type of recreational use in the common park area. In a nutshell, that's where we're at.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. I appreciate you reserving nice, additional contiguous open space in your plan, because we don't often get that. It's often broken up and not great. So, thank you for starting out from that place. So, this is a sketch plan review, so we're not going to get into a lot of details tonight. So, I guess my, my first question I'll ask, what would you, what, what feedback would you like from the board that will help you when you come back next time?
Yep.
What specific questions do you have for us?
I'm glad that you asked that. One, my very first thing is, Phase One is built. What is it that you liked and what is it you didn't like on Phase One? If there's things in Phase One that are not, are not what we're hoping to achieve for development in the area, let us know, so that we don't make the same problem in Phase Two.
So, not sure we can answer that tonight because
No, I know.
We don't do post-construction inspections.
Right.
We approve them and move on, but there, we will have a site walk to schedule for this, so that's something that when we, when we walk in. I, I don't have no idea how far along that, that Phase One even is.
It's done.
It's done. Phase One is done.
So, we'll be happy to give you any feedback when we walk through.
Absolutely. And maybe anybody that's out there, I don't know, if people would have commented about anything for the development to the town or whatever. Always learn from the past, construction. There's something that is great, or they wish that they could have had, let us know, because we wanna try, we want this to be the best that we can make.
Sounds great.
We've kind of utilized the road that's along the top of the, top of the, the slope that's up on, on that area. It's pretty, this has all been cut, so when we go out and do the site walk, we can walk along the center line of where the road is. If you would like, we could stake the center line of the road, so that we can find
Know exactly where we are as we're walking.
I would recommend you stake the center line of the road.
I'll, I'll make one of these plans on a little eleven by seventeen rather than the great big thing, so we can all see where we're walking. There, well, there are a couple of things that I didn't point out in the initial.
So, while we're on the site walk, why don't we pick a date for that?
Sure.
Right now, we can finish that one off. Did you or Kristen have any proposals? I don't know when you would be ready, or when you're looking to do it.
You intend to come back to the planning board in June?
Well, I guess, do we need to, we don't necessarily need to do it tonight. We will do one at some point, but the question is...
Right. I'm just questioning if you wanna get the site walk done before we need to get the memo and all that done for the June meeting.
Well, I guess, I don't know if he knows what he's coming back with yet, because we don't wanna see.
I think we wanna have a site walk before I get too much farther into the project. So, if there was something that you had concerns, I can, I can adjust them as.
Okay. As long as you're comfortable, it's not gonna change substantially as far as, you know, your center, road's center line and. So, do you wanna put a few potential dates or times out?
I don't know if you, if you folks.
You could also do it offline, Kristen.
Yeah, it's ideal to do it at the meeting, so we don't have to notice it, because this serves as notice, because it's a public meeting, publicly broadcast. If you can do something, maybe the week of the twenty-second.
Of May?
Yeah. Is that too quick? Too quick.
That's, that's not a good week for me. I've got.
Yeah, no, we're coming up on a holiday, so it's a, it's a tough, tough year. We could look at the following week, or, I mean, it doesn't have to, I guess, be done before the planning board meeting, but that would be ideal, before they come for preliminary.
You can't schedule on me. The, that week and the first, and the following week are, I'm completely unavailable. I've got work stuff, and I'm gonna be out of town.
Week of June fifth?
I could do something that week.
If we do it early that week, it would still be before the planning board meeting, so you'd have your.
Yes, once I'm meeting the eighth, yeah.
Yeah.
Monday the fifth is my best day.
Yeah, Monday works for me.
So, the fifth, like toward the end of the workday?
For.
June five?
Yeah.
What time would work for people?
That works for me.
Like, it's pr- I could practically walk to it, so.
Okay. I mean, I could probably do anything after, like, four-thirty or so, so.
Yeah, five or five-thirty would work.
Five, I hear five or five-thirty.
Yeah, I could do five.
I could do five.
So, five o'clock, June fifth?
I'm good with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, just to be clear, is, is that a rain or sunshine date? So, if it's raining, we still do it? Okay.
If you'd like to get rid of the ticks for us, that'd be awesome.
I'm just happy the snow's gone, so, you know.
Okay, we get that out of the way. Other feedback that you're looking?
There, there were some good points at the end of the memo that came up. There were five or six items that, if you had comments pertaining to any of those, I mean, that would be good to hear what your thoughts are.
Okay. Yep, I, we can walk through those for you. And some of them may be, you know, they're preliminary, obviously. We don't have a lot of time, but I'll walk through the discussion points with the board. So, the first one is related to open space and whether the feeling is, is adequate in location, quantity, and quality. Anyone have any preliminary comments on that?
I just have some, a question about the deer wintering. I can see that's referenced. I'm curious as to how much deer wintering, I can see there's some, is, is going away. I know that there are a lot of deer in this area. And I'm just, I'm just curious how, is, is this the quality part of the deer wintering area? Are you taking the good stuff and they're getting left? I don't know. Deer like certain things to winter. They need protection, they need something to eat, so if you, that would be interesting to know.
Yep. And quickly, the entire site is all mapped as a, as a deer yard. So, what we're, what we're trying to do with our development is to continue to minimize the amount of impacts that we're having on, on the deer yard for a number of reasons. Environmental would be the first one, the second one would be it's cheaper. And then the third one would be to maintain the privacy in the natural wooded area that would be accomplished around, around the site. Even when we go through a project that has a deer yard in it, the IF&amp;W comes back and says, "Well, just minimize what you can" on the projects that I've been associated with. So, it's nothing that is a, is a showstopper as far as the development, but it's something that you do wanna take care in minimizing the areas that you're trying to build in.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on open space?
I was actually just curious about how close some of these lots are to the stream. And that may be something that we can think about when we're out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I was going to have, it's, it's not open space, but that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
I've had the same thought, and, you know, especially like twenty-two, that that stream goes right through it, but he's gonna have to demonstrate a building envelope and, and all the setbacks from the stream, but that stood out to me. I was wondering about that, but his plan would have to have building envelopes and setbacks and show that he can actually build where he's contemplating.
The one that I have here has that on it, yeah. So, the setback from a stream, even, I don't, I'm not sure what the town's requirement is, but the DEP's requirement is seventy-five feet. So, all of our, we will have a, a, on the final subject of the plan, a seventy-five-foot buffer that mimics the location of where that, that stream is located. So, there'd be no development that's allowed within that seventy-five-foot setback area on either side of the stream.
Okay. I'll go to number two, which is, there were some comments around the open space plan and public access. My comment on that would be, I would invite the applicant to offer public access, but not require it.
Actually, in the contract zone, it said that public access was required.
Yep. Oh, that's right. This has a CZA. Thank you for reminding me of that. So, that answers your question then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Point of information?
Sure.
Can you, is, is, is buffer considered part of the open space calculation? I didn't think that it was, but I can't remember for sure.
Defer to Kristen for that answer.
I don't, there, there are different types of open space. So, there's the, like, the common park area is sort of a separate thing from the rest of it. So, it's all considered open space, but the buffer type of part around the edge, I don't believe is considered part of the common park area, which was what he was denoting, that the common park area itself meets the fifty thousand square foot minimum.
Right.
And the rest of it, those are calculations will be confirming once the engineer reviews these plans that there's enough open space.
Because all the buffer, all the buffering is labeled open space on them.
Right, which it effectively is, it's just kind of defined a little differently. We went over some of that when we dealt with this NRA, NRD question, which the engineer will be reviewing when we get to the formal application.
And I was also curious about, yeah, the, your comments talked about the minimum of fifty thousand square feet, but then in the application, there was something about thirty percent of the.
Well, yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah, it's like those were different.
I thought that I remember seeing in the application, like, an additional twenty thousand or something like that. Was that what you were referring to?
That's the area.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, and is it fifty thousand square feet for Phase One and Phase Two, like, combined? Or is it?
Yeah, no.
Does each phase need fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand for Phase One, an additional twenty thousand for Phase Two, totaling all the common park area for Phase One and Phase Two together, because they'll all be in the same association.
So, you have a total of approximately seventy thousand.
Right.
But they could actually only need fifty thousand.
Okay.
I suspect they're reserving it because they can only have fifty lots anyways, and they've built it out as much as they can.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you look at your table, first, four oh one, thirteen, thirteen, B one, like, it's into your minimum total open space to the original parcel, minimum usable open space to the original parcel, minimum contiguous open space. There, there are some different levels of open space. So, we'll have to dig into those details when it, when it becomes formal, but yes.
And I gotta say, this is very confusing to go through that whole list that's there. That's why I came up with the color, color coding document.
These are nice. Plan.
Okay. Next up was engineered driveways.
Actually, if you'd allow me, one more question about open space, I know.
Sure.
Lot twenty-nine on Stillwater Drive. I wonder how difficult, you've got that dog leg there that runs along the road that's part of the park. I wondered if you couldn't change the shape of that lot a little bit such that that dog here wasn't part of the park, but there was a little bit more of the back of lot twenty-nine. Just square that off.
That's all been, that's all in part of Phase One. It's all been deepened.
Okay.
So, that, that whole piece of the park, not counting the twenty thousand, is all out of Phase One deep.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
I, yeah, I didn't like it either, but that's what.
Because that's kind of.
That's what Doug wanted as far as the length of the road. It kinda, yeah, it kinda breaks things up. I agree.
I mean, that could be changed. It's not the end of the world. That's just a thought.
We have to just get approval from all thirteen people. It's out of the association. Which I haven't turned over yet, but I'm just saying that it's a little sticky that, that one.
Yeah, that lot's not been sold yet, lot twenty-nine though, has it?
No.
So, I'm just gonna stop the conversation back and forth between, between a non-board member, and you would have to be at the podium because the public can't hear you speaking from there. But, thank you. Thank you both. All right. Anything else on open space? Okay. So, engineered driveways. I have to admit, Kristen, I didn't a hundred percent follow your notes here and why we would require engineered, why we might require engineered driveways.
So, driveways have come up as an issue in other subdivisions sometimes, and, and sometimes it depends on the topography and how steep they're getting. Having them engineered at this, as part of this process ensures that they can be built to that spec and they meet all of the town's requirements. Whereas, when they come to us afterward, if it's a more complicated driveway, there's not as much of a process for that. We don't have an engineer on staff. It's like a, a codes question. So, if they're engineered, if you feel that the topography or the site itself would lend itself well to having engineered driveways as part of this, that would all be part of their approval, and it would not, they would not have to pursue the, that permitting after.
I mean, this seems more like the benefit to them is, is that if they're engineered, they don't need to go through the permit process.
And the benefit to the town is that you know that there are specs for them to be built the way you want them to be built.
I mean, I would think we would need to do our site walk before we could say much on that.
Right. Yeah, it's just throwing it out there for you to consider as a sketch.
Unless anyone has anything now they wanted to share, I think it's after the site walk. Traffic volumes and potential traffic study waiver. Anyone have any thoughts on that? I can, I mean, I can get started. Waivers, I'm not big on, so if you request one, make a good justification for why you need it. That's, that's my feedback. I mean, I, you know, that's just a general statement, nothing specific to this, but if, if you're going to request a waiver, put a good justification together to sell why you think you deserve it. And generally, the board's not.
Can I just follow up with your question?
Sure.
With the traffic study, are you looking for a traffic study of just this portion of the project? Or would you be looking for a traffic study with the extension and the construction of the field and the use of the field that's down below at the end of, of this project?
So, I was only speaking in general about waivers. I don't know what the town was thinking, whether the whole public use should be in. Whether the whole public use should be inclusive or not, it seems like it should be. It's all part of the, it's all part of the project and the CZA. So, to me, I would think it would be all encompassing.
I think, if I could speak to what, what I was trying to touch on here was just speaking to that there, there may need to be some discussions probably between the applicant and the town if the board feels that, that it's something that would need a traffic study, because part of it would be town property and town impact related to the use of the ball field. Whereas, if you're asking for a traffic study related to their project, it would likely be focused on the subdivision itself and its impact on to 115. If you felt that was necessary for this level of development. If you, if you feel that you think we're going to get up above 100 peak hour trips when we're tying in the town use, the eventual town use, that would probably need, there'd need to be further discussion regarding how we, how we would probably split that up or how we would handle that, given the CZA, given that it's, would, will become town-owned property and town-owned impact. So, just again, just kind of flagging these things for you folks at, at this point in, in the game.
I mean, I don't know that we can answer it now, but I guess, what I would say is, at some point, yes, there needs to be a traffic study that covers this entire CZA development. There should probably be some discussions among the town or developer, how that's shared or whatever. That's my thought. Everybody have anything else on that one?
It certainly seems like once the town properties develop, you'd be at 100 peak. I, I would not.
Yeah, especially with a soccer game or whatever.
Right, it would be at 100. I, I don't know if you would. Everybody having all 50 lots, you could be at 100 even before that. And this is all feeding through a single point, because there's only one access into this road. So, that, that puts a queue in up.
Right, and remember, the typical ordinance allows for 25 on a dead-end road.
Yeah.
And the CZA got it bumped to 50, so it's, it's double what our typical ordinance would be.
Yeah, I, I'd be leaning towards a, a traffic study. It seems, it seems like it's needed for this. And if you do a traffic study, you might as well do one that includes some assumption of the build of the town land, because then you could do one maybe and not have to do multiples, so.
David, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. Once the, the public use comes into play, I think a traffic study does need to be done, given the, the increased use in addition to just the, the residential part to it. I think if we were just talking the, the, this phase two, we would need to focus on a traffic study, but given the public use, I think it might be necessary.
Heard.
Good, see, now that, that's something that I need to get out and start to get somebody involved with right, right off. So, this is, this is good feedback for me right now.
Yep, so, doesn't sound like you're going to get by without a traffic study, so I'll start that process. Soils information, it's not a high-intensity soil survey. Is the information submitted sufficient for preliminary review with additional high-intensity soil survey information required if needed for all or part based on engineering review? So, I guess, yeah, I mean, we have, the town's engineer hasn't looked at any of this yet. You've only had discussions with Kristen, right?
And Doug.
Right, yeah.
Pardon, I, I, tell me if I'm wrong, but I, we do have the soil study for the areas that we're disturbing. We're not having a soil study down on the gravel pit that's down there. So, that's just going to be utilized as a multipurpose fields.
Yep, and I think we would rely on what the town engineer would be recommending once you start talking with him or her as far as whether your soils info is good enough or there should be more, so I don't think there's really much we can give you there yet. Unless anyone feels different.
No.
Okay. Then last one, the site walk, which we already scheduled.
Yep, and I just wanted to double check. Settle line stakes with stationing would be helpful for the site walk.
Yeah.
Anything else that you would like located?
You could, probably not. I mean, if you had an idea, if you knew driveways, that wouldn't hurt. But I think if you hit the center line and you had, if you had a general knowledge of where the lots were as we were walking the center line, assuming we can walk the center line, I would hope since it's going to be a road.
It's all cleared.
Yeah.
And I know that in the applications that are, in the information provided so far, you talked about wetlands on lot 18 and where the driveway was going to go. So, it might be helpful in particular on lot 18 to have the driveway marked out?
Yep. Yep. That, that wetland finger at the top of lot 18 will basically be filled in as part of the construction for the house lot.
Yeah, the only other piece that I was noting, and I don't know if this is a site walk or what, but just in terms of stormwater systems, it looks like some of them, you're actually filling in wetland to put in a stormwater system, which seems very contra (laugh) to what you're trying to accomplish. So, I just don't know if there's an opportunity to build a stormwater system that will not require any wetland impacts.
Right. No, I'm not sure exactly where you're seeing that unless it's, unless it's the easement area that.
Well, it's the easement, yeah, so that was, yeah, so it is the easement and it goes into.
So, the wetlands will be in a pond inside of that window. And the wetland easement line is, right now, as, we haven't defined it yet, because we haven't designed the ponds.
Okay.
We just have that on as a, as a placeholder at this point. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't be building the well in. I mean, we wouldn't be building ponds in the weather.
I just, size, it all comes down to sizing, and I've seen it happen before. So, I'm just, that's why I bring it up. And then I would just, the other comment that I have, just in terms of stormwater, is that because this drains to the Pleasant River, which is a really important trout stream, which is really important, cold water is really important for trout streams, ponds actually aren't the best in terms of keeping water cold. They actually, you know, allow, you know, it's open water, so it warms up. So, actually gravel wetlands are actually a much better and more effective stormwater management system that keeps your water cool. So, something to explore. It's, I'm not the DEP, we're not the DEP, but I just, if you're looking for input.
I hear you, and I'm glad that you pointed that out. If I, if I propose to have, well, let me even back up further. This project in phase one also has to go to DEP. It meets the standard at that point. So, if, if I have an opportunity to put a pond in an upland area, DEP's going to say, okay, but if I put it in a wetland area and it's avail, the location is available in an upland area, they're going to say, no, you put it up in the upland area, because they don't want any impacts to the wetland area themselves.
Right, I'm talking about a gra, like, the system is a gravel wetland. That's the treatment system instead of.
Like a soil, like a soil filter, is that what?
Right.
Okay, yeah, no, we're proposing soil, we will propose soil filters on both of these locations. Yep, for sure.
Okay, you were just talking about a pond, so.
Soil filter pond.
All right. We have different terminology. It's, it's late. It's all good.
Okay, any other feedback from the board?
I have another request for the site walk is to maybe tag the corners of the common park area, the new area. I don't know how clearly the common park area is already on the face of the earth. It's super clear where it is. I don't, it sounds like it's wooded. So, I'd just be curious to sort of have a, give me a flag to let me know where those are.
You probably need more than a flag because it's all woods.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is so, so I need, I want to be able to see.
Yep. Yep, that's why I'm asking, because we're, we're happy to mark them all.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions for us?
Are you all set?
All right.
We'll catch you on June 5th.
Yeah, nice presentation, both verbally and the package. It's one of the better ones we've got recently for subdivisions, so.
Good.
Yeah, you're off to a good start. All right. Next up for us is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, second?
On favor? At the debate, also unanimous. Close the meeting at 9:20.